Welcome back, everyone. This is the Board of Education meeting for Monday, April 12th, 2021. The board has been in closed session since 6:30. And Charlie, can you call the roll?
Ms. Roach?
Here.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Roby?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Westfall?
Present.
Mr. Kerberg?
Here. We have a quorum. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, unmasking, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. All right, so jumping down to item three on our agenda, communications. Just would like to give congratulations to the those that were elected to the Board of Education during last Tuesday's election. So that would be our current board vice president, Ron Westfall, and our planned new board members-elect of Dr. Kathy Baxter, Barb Seiden, and Rick Todd. We congratulate each of them on their victories last Tuesday. Mr. Westfall, of course, was reelected. Dr. Baxter, Mrs. Seiden, and Mr. Todd were each elected to a four-year Board of Education terms. We thank them in advance for their interest in serving and look forward to bringing them officially on at our next board meeting, which will be Monday, April 26th. And that is assuming that the county clerk does certify the election results before then. At that time, we will also officially say goodbye to our exiting board members, Board Secretary Dave Cook, and board members, Dr. Mike Roby and Mr. Bob Smith, that evening. So please, again, look forward to joining us on the 26th. Should anything change with that, obviously, we will notify everyone involved and the community. And we would look to do a special Board of Education meeting for the purposes of the reorganization and swearing in of the new board members later that week to abide by the Illinois School Code and election law and get that done then. So more to come, but again, planned on April 26th at this point in time. That's all I had. 4.01, Board Salutes. Does anyone have anything for this evening? All right, hearing nothing. We do not have any special recognition, special welcomes or recognitions for this evening. So jumping on down to 5.01 is Public Comment. And so, again, just a few notes before we open it up to share the comments that we have received. District 202 protocol and procedure is to allow up to two minutes per comment and up to 20 minutes total for public comment, subject to the Board President's discretion. For this meeting, we have received 11 public comments since our last meeting on March 22nd. To avoid any suggestion of impropriety, editing, etc., Director of Community Relations, Tom Hernandez, will be the one reading each email. He will read them in a timestamp order they were received up till 5:00 p.m. today. He will read them word for word, minus appropriate reductions. They are subject, again, to the stated time limits for each comment and overall number of time, two minutes per comment, and not to exceed 20 minutes total. All public comments have been shared with the Board of Education in advance of tonight's meeting and will also be posted on the district website as part of the information for this meeting, with appropriate reductions to remove personal email addresses and names or information identifying specific students or staff. So with that, Mr. Hernandez, I will turn it over to you.
All right, sir. First comment tonight comes from a writer who identifies as a student at one of our elementary schools. "I'm a kid at blank school. I don't think it is right to build a new school and make kids move from a school that they love and have a lot of friends to move to a school where they don't know a single person. If there was a vote, you would see how much everybody doesn't like your idea. When my mom and dad told me I had to move schools, I felt so, so, so bad." Next is from Ann Smelzer. "Good evening. As a teacher in the district, I want to take a moment to commend our school board for their work in this very difficult year. I am sure when you volunteered your time, you could not imagine this scenario. I'm so proud of Dr. Abrel for creating a plan that truly kept safety as the number-one priority. Believing in your plan and adjusting as needed and not bowing to pressure was impressive. Even when the board disagreed and pushed back, I feel my safety and the safety of my students never changed. I feel valued. I feel that against some very inappropriate parent feedback, you stayed the course. I am proud to work for this administration and this board while they perform with grace and determination to do what is best for students. I'm so very sad about the parent comments that were mean-spirited and undeserved. No decision that could have been made would have appealed to all, but all students were kept and continue to be as safe as possible in a global pandemic. Good for you." Next is from Michelle Colby. "It is a continual disappointment when we watch your board meetings. Thankfully for my family, we won't succumb to the disappointment any longer. My husband and I have finally decided to move our children from the disaster and incompetence of your district, school board, and most importantly, your decisions. The last board meeting was the last straw for us. Your lack of integrity and ethics is beyond disgusting. You placing a vote for a new superintendent 15 months before your term is up is unbelievably revealing of the shady person you are. That position should not have been voted on until the new board members were in place. We are more than frustrated, saddened, and just downright angry with the decisions that the board has continually made without listening to the majority of parents on our children's education, which is supposed to be your priority. All you are focused on is your status quo. Because of your incompetence, my family will be paying an extraordinary amount to a private school for an education that we already pay a large amount for in our property taxes. How many other families will have to sacrifice to give their children a better education? We moved here to be in this district. We moved here because 202 was rated so high. I wonder what your ratings will be after this. I'm sure you will blame the pandemic. Instead of being a leader, you are a failure to this district." Next is from Julie Sampson. "I am asking for the Board of Education to step down. I am asking for Betsy Vincent to step down. Politics do not belong in our schools. Kids first." Next is from Trevor J. Moore. "Members of the board, given everything the community and our schools have gone through this past year, I want to take the opportunity to say thank you. You made the right decision getting our kids back in school five days per week for the remainder of the school year. Thank you for this and for serving in this often thankless volunteer role in our community." Next is from Christine Thompson. "I'm writing to ask for your help in re-reviewing the new school zoning map that was approved at the last meeting. I feel that the new zoning was not done in the best interest of the students and that the board did not do an adequate job in reviewing the materials prior to the vote. As the board, I expect that each of you will be looking out for what's best for the students of the district. And if that's your goal also, you need to revisit the new zoning. I know this email is long, but I'm not here to yell and rant. I'm here to explain my reasons and concerns, because I think they should be your concerns also. So please take the time to read this. Thank you to Mr. Roby, who asked some good questions at the last meeting that were not adequately addressed by Dr. Abrel. The problem is, students should not be switching among the houses during their regular school journey. There were already a few instances of this happening in the district, and this new zoning has made it even worse. I'm so concerned for what this means for my children's school experience and other kids in similar situations. I believe kids should be able to go through their school years with a consistent group of friends and peers. This helps them maintain friendships, develop a feeling of school community, and makes the transition from elementary to middle school and from middle school to high school easier. It seems that these zoning decisions were made completely by the Director of Transportation. Is that correct? If so, this seems like the wrong approach. Shouldn't school administrators make these decisions using the students' best interests as their guiding principle? Transportation should be there to support those decisions. To be clear, I'm not mad that my student has to switch to a new elementary school. I understand the new school needs to be filled, and we are reasonably close. A one-time switch is okay. I'm mad that my student is being switched to a school with almost no other kids from my student's house. The March 22nd presentation lists a goal of, if students need to move, keep them in their same theater house. Please see my list below of all the places where this is not true. I would genuinely like an explanation of how this map meets this goal. This rezoning should be a chance to correct the current misalignments, not to make more." And that's two minutes on that one. Next is from Jennifer Pollak. "In the most recent community column from Dr. Abrel, he stated, 'We remain firmly committed to returning to a normal school schedule next fall, presuming scientific knowledge about the virus continues to grow, vaccinations continue to increase, and other health conditions continue to improve. If not, we are already working on contingency plans, which I hope we never have to use.'" That's a quote. "My question for you is, why weren't we firmly committed to 'normal school schedule' this past fall? Even when learning remotely, our students were missing academic time. They have not had full class periods at all this year. Students should have had, at the least, full-day remote instruction. Our children now have had three-quarters of a year of school last year and half of a year of school this year. As a mom, a teacher, and a taxpayer, this is not acceptable on any level. Over the course of the last several months, I've heard many 'reasons' why we cannot manage to bring students back into the schools, yet I've not heard any rationale as to the half-day remote learning scenario that students were forced into for the majority of the school year. What is being done to correct this? How can you believe this last line of the community update? Together, we will prepare our students for the future. I'd like to know exactly how this will be done. How do you plan to make up for the missing three-quarters of a school year? Or is this just another tagline to use that sounds good and that most people won't push? I, for one, am tired of hearing 'we can't,' when the reality is, we won't. Plain and simple, plenty of large districts with similar numbers have figured out how to return students to all-day, in-person learning safely, and who have had full-day remote learning when necessary." And that's two minutes on that one. Next is from Julie Sampson. "School Board and Administration, in the most recent community column from..." Oh, I'm sorry. This is a verbatim, cut-and-paste repeat of the last one. So this is from Julie Sampson. It's the exact same letter. Next is from Karen Carter. "I'm a mother of several District 202 students at several schools. We have been in the district for 14 school years. In that time, we've also had kids attend Bonnie Macbeth and Ira Jones. We've had kids in typical classrooms, special ed, and blended. This past school year has been a lesson in both the strengths and weaknesses of our district. I'm of the mindset that everyone in our district did the very best they could under the circumstances, and I'm very grateful for the leadership of you and the school board. Do I pretend everything was perfect? Absolutely not. However, I don't think anyone could have done a better job in an unprecedented and unanticipated time in our country. This past Tuesday's elections and the weeks leading up to it were an absolute embarrassment to our community. I'm so disgusted by the actions of candidates teaming up to try and take control of our school board for their own agenda. I'm so glad that common sense ruled. However, I feel this election set a precedent that should not be continued. It is not acceptable that a group of individuals be allowed to combine their resources to try to be elected as a unit. Each individual person should be elected on their own merits. Taking four people, an automatic majority for voting purposes, all with the exact same opinions is not in the interest of our community or our kids. To make this relatable to all, say, for instance, a group of four friends decided to run for student council. Instead of each student having money to place 10 posters around the school, they decide to pool their resources and place 40 with all of their names. Anyone else running only has 10. Every time they give a speech, each of their friends gets mentioned. Anyone else running only gets talked about in their own speech. You get the picture." And that's two minutes on that one. Next is from Angela Olson. "Your pandemic video narratives are very one-sided. Do you really care about the children? Are you paying attention to the state and local stats on the impact that remote learning is having on families and children's mental health, or how it has impacted our most vulnerable, at-risk children with abuse and neglect soaring? What about the educational inequity gap of our minority students? A lot of poor minority students are not even showing up. Will you learn from the past or keep making the same mistakes going forward? Your past efforts to plan were minimal. If you continue this path of community suffrage, then you will continue to lose more families, which will mean cuts for you. Do you want to continue to sacrifice your younger teachers for the union's demands? Your teachers deserve improved work conditions and should not be doing in-class and Zoom instruction at the same time. That was the result of your poor planning. Local area schools have already started to outsource remote learning and make teacher cuts. Will you even plan to make these cuts when you have lost so many students to moving in private schools? Where is your care for the kids, teachers, and community? What is your priority? Stop making videos in an attempt to change the narrative and get to work on getting everyone back in the classroom five full days. I demand more innovation from you and a can-do attitude. Your whole 'not enough room' stories are not good enough. I will not stop advocating for what is right as it relates to our children. Stop saying they are resilient and put their needs first. You're failing all of them. The cure must not be worse than the problem. Schools should be the last to close and the first to open." And the last one for tonight is from Michelle Colby again. "Board members, I would like to respond to the YouTube video Dr. Abrel did last week for the Life in a Pandemic series. First off, I can't believe you're patting yourself on the back for our children losing half of a school year due to the lack of planning and organizing by this district. Yay, five days a week, great job. You did well with that, but let's look at those five days and 3.75 hours of learning. How many hours have our children missed all year with half-days? Do you know, Dr. Abrel, I am asking you specifically? How many hours are they continuing to lose the rest of the year? Second, what parent advisory group is helping with planning, and when did this email go out? I sure would have liked to know about this and would definitely volunteer my time. Thirdly, what extended year and summer school are you planning? This is the first I've heard. When are you planning to let parents know about the extended year? Is it for all students that have suffered this year or just who you handpick? Fourth, what does alternate schedules mean for next year? Again, will you let parents know about these schedules? Also, our family has not and will not pay the school fees for a half-year of education. I've read that many districts are actually refunding portions or all of the fees due to the lack of education this year. What is 202 doing to help families with these fees?" And that's it for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Appreciate it, as always. All right, moving on. For the Consent Agenda this evening, we have two items. We will take them together. Item 6.01 is approval of policies that have been on 30-day public display. Policy 4:80, Accounting and Audits. Policy 4:90, Student Activity and Fiduciary Funds. Policy 7:100, Health, Eye, and Dental Examinations, Immunizations, and Exclusion of Students. And Policy 9:01, Acceptable Use of Technology. And Item 6.02 is approval of the Certified and Non-Certified Personnel Agendas, both as presented. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Heather's motion?
Second.
A second. Charlie?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yeah.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes, the Consent Agenda items are passed. And with that, I would like to welcome Erin Allison, who will serve next year as the Assistant Principal of Liberty Elementary School. A little background on Erin. She will replace Megan Urban, who will be taking another position in the Student Services Department next year. Erin started her educational career in 2010 as a teacher aide at a private school in Carbondale, Illinois. From 2011 to 2021, she worked as a special education teacher and administrator at two schools in District 186 in Murfreesboro, Illinois. And this year, she is working as a special education teacher at Nelson Prairie Elementary School in 122. So congratulations, Erin, and welcome to the District 202 family. And we look forward to having you with us next year at Liberty Elementary School. All right, jumping on down now to Area Section 9, 9.01, Approval of Resolution Authorizing Notice to Revity for a Tenured Teacher. Can I get a motion?
My motion.
Rod's motion. Bob's second. Charlie, can you call the roll?
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes, item passes. And 9.02, Approval of the Resolution Authorizing Notice of Dismissal for Educational Support Personnel Effective at the Close of the 2020-2021 School Term. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Bob's motion?
Second.
Heather's second. Charlie?
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes, item passes. Moving on down to Item 10, 10.01 is the Return 2021 Update.
Thank you, Mr. Kerberg. Just a few things on an update of our Return 2021 Plan. We are in Day Four. Today was Day Four of a return to five-day-a-week attendance of in-person learning. Certainly, we do have students on remote learning as well. Feedback from our staff, our building principals, that I've observed or heard or when I've been out in the buildings or district staff has been out to buildings, has been extremely positive. I have heard from parents who are very pleased that their children are back, at least on a part-time basis. The lunches are still problematic for us to be able to go a full, traditional number of hours in a school day, as we have in the past. State Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Public Health are very strict and very direct in the guidance that they give schools. I can quote from the most recent Frequently Asked Questions update from the Board of Education or State Board of Education that is on their website. "To the point, they say, 'Strict adherence to six feet. Social distancing must be maintained and monitored by school staff when face masks are removed in limited situations,' as listed on Page 4 of the revised guidance. For example, students or schools must ensure that all individuals maintain social distancing of at least six feet when masks are removed for eating." Again, that makes it problematic for us to have lunches because of the number of students or parents of those students who wished for a return to in-person learning. We are working, again, on plans for this summer at our next Applied, our Curriculum and Applied Tech meeting, which is on the 21st of this month. We will be discussing plans for summer school, not only extended school year, or what's known as ESY, which is traditionally for special education populations, but also for regular ed populations. We will have some details on that, and those programs and details will go, then, to the full board at the next board meeting for approval. I do anticipate that the topic of fees or cost will certainly be addressed in that, and not to get ahead of committees and/or the board, but I think folks will find a favorable outcome as details of the summer school program come about. As we do plan for the beginning of next year, I'm asked, well, what will be different? Or why do you think it will be different than it is now? And I'm basing it on four, four-and-a-half months, give or take, of advanced science or scientific continued research on the COVID vaccine. I also believe, or state that belief, upon the increase of vaccine that everyone is receiving, or the increased numbers and percentages of those being vaccinated. And also, the experts who've really been quite on target for most of this say that in mid-April, I'm sorry, mid-August, there should be a vaccine for those 16 and under who wish to have it. It would be probably under the emergency use authorization, as the vaccine for everyone is under now. But they anticipate in mid-August that being available for those 16 and under. There have been some questions or inquiries on the number of cases as we've come back out of spring break. Schools, more and more schools are opening. I don't think it's a surprise that more cases of COVID really are occurring or the percentages are starting to creep up, especially in the age group that are school age. Those that aren't vaccinated are really, you know, give or take, in that 25 and under age group. So we've got more and more schools reopening. That's the group that really is not vaccinated. We've got more and more athletics going on in all high schools. We've got a group or an age that really isn't used to social distancing. All of those things, it should not really be a surprise that the numbers are increasing. With a little bit more detail, I'm going to ask Mrs. Griffith, our Associate or Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, to provide some more details on where the numbers are, specifically in District 202.
Absolutely. One of the changes we made is if you visit the district website and go under the Return 2021 Plan, there is a section that is on our COVID dashboard. Starting last week, we actually updated our dashboard with statistics based on how many cases were actually located at each building. Please understand that the stats that are reflected for last week are based on the contact tracing forms that were completed as of noon on Friday. So we are waiting for some of those statistics, some of those forms, to be filled out. So you will see a higher number of cases and direct exposures this week that may actually be reflective of cases that occurred last week in the buildings. One thing that we want to emphasize, we've heard rumors that there are a significant number of cases at our schools, and we actually are not seeing a significant increase in cases. What we are seeing is now that we can have students in classrooms less than six feet apart and on the bus, up to 50 students per bus, and we have some high-risk sports that have recently been in place. So high-risk sports are considered to be basketball, football, and wrestling. Obviously, wrestling is not in season right now, and basketball just ended. But in many of those high-risk sports, if one individual is diagnosed with COVID, the entire team has to quarantine. In a classroom, if one student is diagnosed and we are seated only three feet apart instead of six feet apart, it could result in eight students per classroom having to quarantine. So if a student at a middle school or a high school has seven classes that they go through in a day, they could potentially have 56 students that may need to quarantine. On top of that, if that student also rides the bus and they are diagnosed with COVID and rode a bus that had 50 students, three rows in front of that student have to quarantine, three rows behind that student have to quarantine, and one row across. So that could result in up to 15 students needing to quarantine. So while we may see a high number of students that are quarantining, there is not a high number of individuals at this time in our buildings who have been diagnosed with COVID. We're following the recommendations based on IBPH. So even though we were allowed to return at less than six feet apart in spacing, we do still have to quarantine students that are less than six feet apart from an individual who was diagnosed with COVID. So if you do want to see the accurate statistics, we do encourage you to visit our District COVID Dashboard. Again, it's on our Return 2021 Plan, and we will update those statistics typically every Friday afternoon.
Thank you, Mrs. Griffith. Any questions from the Board of Education, from myself or any of our district administrative team?
Dr. Abrel, I would also add that with Meanest Help, we push that out every week as part of the Education Partners, which goes to every family address and every staff address. So hopefully, people are looking at that and keeping track.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all for the update. Appreciate that. And hearing no questions from the board, we will move on to 10.02, Update on Attendance Zones for the 2021-2022 School Year.
Thank you, Mr. Kerberg. We have, district administration has made final adjustments regarding the Attendance Zone recommendations approved by the board on March 22nd. Individual parents are in the process of being contacted regarding any changes or special requests. We will be in contact beginning tomorrow and through the rest of this week with folks, either specifically or throughout a specific geographic area. If there are further questions or parents have further questions regarding applying for an exemption, they may work through or contact myself or specifically one of our Level Directors in our Administration and Personnel Department. Those would be Dr. Fink at the elementary level, Shannon Miller at the middle school level, and Dr. Craig Brown at the high school level. Again, those are Directors in our Administration and Personnel Department who handle those requests. I'm highly confident that we can work with parents and satisfy the majority, maybe not quite all, but the majority of those requests. So with that being said, that's an update on the Attendance Zones and the adjustments made for the 21-22 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Abrel. Any questions or comments from the board? We don't have an intergovernmental liaison or Board of Education report tonight. There's no unfinished or new business, so we will jump on down to 13.01, Freedom of Information Request Status. Dr. April?
We've received five Freedom of Information requests since last Board of Education meeting, all during the 21 school year. Number one, Michelle Colby, Community Member for Materials Regarding Substitute Teachers and Lunch Supervisors, received March 18, due March 25, completed March 18. Jess McIlveine, a Community Member for Student Academic Achievement before and during the pandemic. That was received on March 23, due March 30, completed March 30. Number three, Laura Bargas, a Community Member for Materials Regarding Attendance Zone Changes Approval, approved, that were approved on March 22. That was received March 29, due April 7, completed March 30. Number four, Andrea Shrabat, a Community Member for Additional Materials Regarding Public Comments Received by Email for the July 27, 2020 Board of Education Meeting. That was received March 25, due April 1. The deadline was extended five working days, as allowed by law, to April 9. It was completed on April 7. Last, Jen Pollak, Community Member for Materials Regarding Dr. Glenn Wood's Contract and Employment, received April 5, due April 12, completed April 7.
Thank you, sir. And 14.01, Announcements and Scheduled Activities?
We have remote committee meetings Wednesday, April 21, 6:00 PM, as Personnel, Policy, and Administration. At 6:00 PM is Site and Finance. At 6:45 will be Curriculum and Applied Technology Committee. The next Board of Education meeting will be held remotely Monday, April 26, closed session at 6:30, public session at 7:30.
Thank you. We will not be having to have a second closed session this evening, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Bob's motion?
Second.
Heather's second. Charlie?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Howard Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Kerber?
Yes, we are adjourned.